Lieutenant Governor McGeechan.
Committee, Lieutenant Governor McGeechan before you today. And I'm here because I'm here to report on the activity from the State Board of Education that we've had so far. As you can recall, at our last meeting on June 24th, as the Chair of the Committee, I did ask the Director of the State Board of Education, as well as at least one board member, to come before our committee on June 24th, because we had some real and legitimate questions about some of the standards in our rules, our administrative rules. And there had been significant debate during the legislative process on the issue where budgets were being held up. And then there was a bill, House Bill 377, that passed through the Legislature. And so, we asked the Executive Director and members of the Board to come talk to our -- present to our committee and be available to answer questions. And those people that I spoke with declined the invitation to come to the committee. And so then, as you recall, last month in June, that we made an official request to the State Board. It was a motion was made by our committee to come and present today and discuss this important issue in the higher educational system. And so, the motion was made, it was passed unanimously by this committee. And so, we made another effort to reach out to the Executive Director and members of the State Board to be here today. The letters which you supported, we wrote a letter on July 12th asking them to be here. We did get a response from Director Freeman on July 16th, that he had already made arrangements for a family vacation on this date, but he wouldn't be able to be here. And that the Board President was also out of the state for the remainder of July on family engagements and wouldn't be able to attend. I did speak with another board member and encouraged her participation today. She and I had a very respectful dialogue with each other, but she declined to be here today as well. I have found her to have very courteous dialogue. She is a candidate to run for Superintendent of Education, so I would encourage the citizens of Idaho to ask her position on the campaign trail on some of these important issues. So, I wish that someone else could be here presenting to you today on some of this information. But I will do my best to present to you some of the important questions that we have in our public schools and our higher institutions of education. Our office also did a public records request on a special meeting that was called, and they were very cooperative in getting the information to us. I will make note that emails from board members contain board members personally identifying information, and so that information was redacted. Executive agencies do that to protect Idaho citizens. I just wanted to make sure that people knew on the committee that the State Board of Education, it has been responsive to us and is cooperating on some of our requests. So, we followed up on July 22 after they said they would not be able to be present here and answer questions. So, we came up with a set of specific questions for them that are focused on some of the accreditation requirements of our university systems. So, they did respond to the questions that we came up with on Thursday, July 22nd. Those questions were submitted. And then, on Monday, July 26th, those answers were provided to us. And you do have a copy of the answers to our questions in your files. So, you can use that as a reference to this discussion. What I'd like to do is give a little bit of context to where we are today, how we came up with the questions that were posed, and then some other information that we will hear from our administrative assistant on some research that she did with the accrediting agency. So, I always like to look back and see, try to understand, where has all this discussion started within our State Board of Education? In our office, we have reviewed minutes from the State Board of Education from April 21st. I note in the minutes where the university presidents are giving their reports to the State Board of Education, and they're asked questions about some of their goals. And on that date, Dr. Marlene Trump, who's the President of Boise State University, commented that BSU plans to create and enact a comprehensive strategic enrollment and student success plan that will include components relating to supporting the whole student recruitment, retention, graduation, and addressing equity gaps. So, that was one of the things that was reported by one of our university presidents to the board meeting on that day. Other significant discussion on that day in relation to this topic that we're talking about is a discussion of freedom of expression and responsibility. And at the time of this, the Board Secretary, these are all public records of public. So, any of you can go online and see the exact thing that I'm reading from here today. So, on that day, and this was April, again, back in April 21, 22, one of the board members introduced this discussion. And he noted that he, this all was during the last legislative session, when some of these conversations started coming, and some of the budgets were being held up. He noted that he had, during this legislative session, he expected the majority of the conversations during the last legislative session should, would be focused on the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic and the subsequent learning loss. But the conversation had focused mainly on the climate and culture in K-12 classrooms and at the universities, at the institution of higher education. And some of the discussion, for those of you who weren't tracking what was happening back then, there was a pre-K grant that was denied. The higher education budget was stalled. And at the end of the day, the higher education budget was cut because of some of these concerns and discussions that were taking place in our universities. I also would note that the same board member shared in the minutes stated that he shared his belief that this is not a systemic issue. He voiced his concerns that the legislation that has been introduced to mitigate these issues is in opposition of free speech and academic freedom. This person discussed that the Board should take preemptive action to help drive the conversation. And he suggested that the Board update Board Policy 3.B and Board Policy 3.P incorporating the Chicago Principles. Now, I didn't have time to do this research. Apparently, on this day, there is an addendum or a document which describes what the Chicago Principles are. I don't know what it is, but we found in the research of the minutes that that was a recommendation that they adopt that. So, I'll take questions and once I'll send them. This would be one of the recommendations that we as a committee should consider, is that we should ask our State Board of Education, what is the Chicago Principles? Where does it come from? And what does it mean in our school? So, I will take a question because it sounded like you had an issue on that.
Madam Chair, may I just, so the Chicago Principles are a set of free speech principles put together at the University of Chicago that with the assistance of several national organizations, they're considered to be the gold standard as far as protecting free speech on campus.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks for that clarification. So, I'm just trying to, I am just trying to share with you, convey to you some of the research that I have uncovered through reading through these board minutes. And another thing that I found that was noteworthy and interesting in this set of minutes was that at the time, the Board Vice President mentioned that the fact that out-of-state students pay more in tuition, and that perhaps discussed that, he discussed the importance of maintaining that portion of Idaho's students because they pay higher tuition rates in. I thought that was kind of interesting there. And then, oh, here's a good note that I found in the minutes about our work as a task force. There was a mention that the Lieutenant Governor had established a task force to investigate the issue, and it was stated that the Board will take action based on the findings of that report. So, I think that's a good message for us and for the effort that we're making. That was kind of some generic stuff that happened in April. And then, there was a board meeting in the month of May, where there was even more significant discussion along this line and what was happening in the Legislature at the time. So, that was May 12th through the 13th. Now, this, mind you, this, I believe, was the time that the Legislature adjourned. So, the bill, House Bill 377, had already been passed, and the budgets had already been passed. But they did meet, and a significant part of their discussion was a legislative update and discussion. So, at the time, the new Board President stated that, again, he was surprised that legislative conversations were not focused on the institution president's efforts to keep students on campus, but rather an emphasis on social justice and critical race theory. There was discussion about House Bill 377, another bill that was proposed, House Bill 364, and the budgets. Noteworthy, the Executive Director noted that the bill of House Bill 377, which is non-discrimination in public education, noted that no distinction should be made based on race or ethnicity, and that there are accreditation data points that require these demographics in regard to closing equity gaps. So, this is what caused us to do some further research about the university's accreditation process, and that will also be reported to you later today. One of the members did note that the discussion of social justice and diversity programs began last July, when a lot of discussion was happening involving the quality of education at Boise State University and other institutions. And there was also concern that funds were being utilized to support specific student groups or lead students to adopt certain ideologies. So, the discussion, if you can recall, it was about a year ago today that we started hearing a lot of stuff of what was happening on the campus of Boise State University. So, I think at least the minutes reflect that that's when the Board, the State Board of Education, started paying attention to what was, to that discussion, and started talking about it some more. On this day, they did invite the President of the Northwest Credit, it's the NWCCU, that's the organization which accredits our institutions of higher learning. And so, he was on a Zoom meeting, and he just outlined that the Board must accommodate these NWCCU guidelines, and that students are more successful when they've been exposed to opportunities for development. And he added that accreditation focuses on creating equitable education experiences. The President of the Board at the time mentioned that while the bill speaks to critical race theory, legislative dialogue has weaponized terms such as social justice and diversity. Those were the words of the Board Chair at the time. Another thing that I thought was interesting in the minutes was a discussion that the legislative conversations are conflicting with the people that the Board serves, and provided an example of recent institution presidential searches noting that the primary concern for students and stakeholder groups was addressing diversity and inclusion. Another topic that was interesting, which I believe led to, it was an emergency board meeting that was called right after our last board meeting that we had on June 24th. The President agreed that it would be beneficial for the Board to define the terms that were in House Bill 377, so that board discussions can be more productive. He noted that there is not data available to reflect what is actually happening on campuses, and that the claims have been based on situational experiences. So, I believe that that is what led to the emergency board member meeting that was called. So, we met on Thursday, June 24th. On Friday, June 25th, they made an announcement that they were going to call an emergency board meeting to meet the following Monday. So, they met on Monday and had further discussion on this issue, which is going to be brought more into clarification in the presentation on accreditation. But again, in the minutes, there was again another mention of these Chicago Principles. So, thank you for a little bit of definition of what that is. Mr. Freeman outlined that it will be important moving forward for the Board to define the terms or utilize different terminology and suggest that the Board collaborate with its counterparts in other states to revise policies to include diversity and inclusion. And so, that might be another suggestion for our committee to maybe do some more research on what they found by looking at some of the other states on this issue of diversity and inclusion. A board member mentioned that the Board's discussions should continue to focus on helping students catch up and reengage after the pandemic, and expressed concern that the Board will lose focus on that role and its long-term strategic priorities if it continues to discuss legislative concerns. So, for my friends that are lawmakers in this room, Representative Gaines, I know Senator Mayor is here, that's a little concerning to me that our State Board seems to think that legislative concerns might be a little destructive to them. And then, this Mr., the President of NWCCU commented his appreciation for the Board's positive reframing of the situation. So, I think a reflection of those two sets of minutes, I think that helps to give a little bit more of context about the why, why they held their emergency meeting on that day, June 28th. And they did have, in that discussion, they presented, just so that you all know and the members of the public know how this all works. They presented a policy that was discussed and their definitions of what diversity, equity, and inclusion is. It was presented to the Board, there was discussion. Those minutes, that agenda item is also in your folder. And I would also encourage you to go online and watch that clip. All of those Zoom meetings, they're all recorded. And so, it's interesting contextual information to go back and read, or excuse me, to watch those Zoom meetings. I was listening on that day, and so I, because I really wanted to know what is they're talking about. And so, the way it works anyways is the language, they presented language for their definition of diversity, equity, inclusion, was presented to the Board, they had discussion on the language, and then somebody made a motion that they accept those definitions, and that, I believe that it passed unanimously. I don't think there was any dissent. But if I'm wrong, you can correct me on that. So, what happens next is that they will have another board meeting in the month of August, next month. And that is one of the questions that we presented to the State Board, is how are you accepting, how is the State Board of Education receiving public input on its definitions of diversity, equity, and inclusion from its meeting on June 28th? So, they are collecting public input, there's an opportunity for the public to weigh in on this before they come back to their formal board meeting in the month of August, where they would actually make a formal vote to present that as a policy, Board policy. If you have that agenda item in your binder, you can read that this would be, if they approve it, and we're going to ask questions, we'll find out more about where their definition came from with our presentation later this afternoon. But if you do approve that, it's written into the agenda item that this will be required within our university system. So, I, let's see. I think that's all I have to report to you about what's happening on our State Board of Education. Again, I do regret that someone from the State Board of Education was not here to present to us today or on the June 24th meeting. Those are governor-appointed positions, and those people serve at the direction of the governor. This is a very, very important issue. And those that are running, as I said, the one board member that I know is running for to become our next Superintendent of Education, I encourage you to ask her how she feels about a lot of this stuff. And I will restate that we do have a friendly discussion with each other, and I find her to be very responsive to my questions and to my concerns. So, I would just leave that at that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the State Board of Education on these issues. Great, thank you, Lieutenant Governor. Committee, any questions from the Lieutenant Governor on your presentation? Mr. Hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ma'am, when you mentioned the topic, I just did a quick search here, and I found some articles, Idaho had news, and then it looks like the other one I just pulled up too. Do you know of any media outlet that reports objectively on these things in the state?
Mr. Hand, that's a little bit of a tough question for me to answer. Lieutenant Governor, ma'am, you don't need to answer, I know that's relevant, but would you like to? Professor Yenner. Consider that I'm, well, never mind. I won't.
One of the things, would you, could you explain to the committee the extent to which the Legislature oversees and regulates the State Board? So, for instance, if the State Board adopted the particular definitions of diversity, equity, and inclusion, made them policy throughout the university system, through the K-12 system, is that beyond the Legislature's purview in connection?
It's not, Mr. Yenner, Professor Yenner. Oh, I'm so sorry. Madam Chair, I beg your forgiveness, Madam Chair, Professor Yenner. That is not beyond that, because the whole State Board of Education operates under state statute, and they are directed, it's clear what their role and responsibility is as dictated by statute. Thank you. Did you have a follow-up, Professor Yenner? Committee, any other questions?
Madam Chair, thank you. I would also like to point out that the governor does appoint the State Board of Education, and it is really important that those appointees are not driven by staff or university presidents. It's really important that they really delve into what is happening, because they are in charge of K through college. And so, as you interview prospective candidates for governor, it's important to ask the questions how they feel about their State Board of Education.
Let's try to bring back, is there a question in there? No. Any other questions? Mr. Spoon.
Madam Chair and Lieutenant Governor, you've presented us a lot of information, Lieutenant Governor, about the State Board of Education. And do you believe that it would be possible, at least theoretically, for local school districts to function and meet the needs of students and parents in the absence of a State Board of Education?
Madam Chair and Mr. Spoon, I believe that a lot of the things that are necessary for the monitoring of our local school districts are provided for in the statute. But I don't, that doesn't mean that those things couldn't be strengthened and reinforced. We learned about that last month, about these, how the local school boards operate, and the statute gives them authority. There's provisions for these curriculum subcommittees underneath each school district. So, I think what, the framework is there in our statute, but that doesn't mean that we can't strengthen our statutes. And also, next month, I'd like to share with you some examples from other states, how families and parents have gotten more engaged in standing firm with their local school boards. But it's really, really important that the citizens of Idaho really understand how much power and authority that the law has vested in their hands to be more engaged in our local schools. We just need to, we need to grab that authority that's given to us and be more aware of what's happening. I don't know if I fully answered your question that we can do all that without a State Board of Education. The State Board of Education, as you read through these rules, they're very extensive, and they deal with a lot of difficult issues. So, I couldn't say whether we could do without them at this point, because I see that they have a lot of responsibility on their hands. Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. And Reverend Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lieutenant Governor, I have a slightly different take on that question, because what concern that I have, just based on initial impression of the material that you've been sharing, is that there's not a great deal of accountability on the part of the, on the part of the members of the Board of Education and State Superintendent. And of course, State Superintendent is an elected position that board members are appointed, as you pointed out. Is there a way without, I mean, the Legislature obviously cannot micromanage the State Board of Education. Is there a way, either through statute or influence, or I don't know, to simply encourage a little more accountability on the part of the State Board? Because it seems, seems to me, it's like that impression. It seems to me that they're just saying, you want us to what? We'll just have a emergency meeting and we'll tell you. And that's, I'm sure, I'm sure I'm over the top in what I'm saying. But again, my question is, is there a way to reach accountability on the part of the State Board?
Madam Chair, Reverend Wilson, absolutely, there's a way to ensure more accountability. And if we need to strengthen and shore up our statutes, then that's what needs to be done. Our Legislature needs to claim the authority that they have to dictate the policy in our state, and education is such a huge area of importance to all of us as citizens. state. And education is such a huge area of importance to all of us as citizens. The responsibility of the board is so large and so encompassing. I have heard from some people that the amount of responsibility they have within the board is so big because they have to manage K through 12 schools and then they have to manage the higher education. And some, I've heard some people wonder if, whether some, de-segregation, is that an okay word to use?
Modification.
There's so mu, what is it?
Modification.
Modification, because they have so much to manage that maybe it's too much that they're trying to go K through 12 and higher education. So I've heard discussion about that. And, and I, what we'll learn about the accreditation is that some of this stuff is circular, that the people who, who respond and provide input to the accrediting agencies are also member institutions. And so it's just circular like this, that these people are all in this sphere to influence each other.
Thank you. We just have a couple minutes remaining, committee, until you're going to take a short break. I think it was Mr. Nelson had his light on and then Mr. Colson. Good, Mr. Colson.
Madam Chair, Lieutenant Governor, I appreciate all the background information as you ran us through all these narratives of the Department of Education. Would it make sense to divide the Department of Education in different categories like K through 3rd, 4th through 7th, things like that to alleviate, alleviate some of this minutia? Because there's so many laws and so many dynamics that come into play to be more, be more held accountable and really understand the process of a student going through the education process. Because it appears to me that what's happening is they're looking at the end result, not the process of learning as the person goes through the Department of Education.
Madam Chair and Lieutenant Governor. Mr. Colson, yes, that could be done, but it would have to be done by the legislature to modify the statute the way the statutes are written. If the legislature thinks that it needs to be split up a little bit like that, that would be a legislative policy within the policy body.
Mr. Nelson, did you still have a question?
Madam Chair, I was just, wanted to point out that in that question you asked regarding how is the State Board of Education receiving public input, there's an email address listed that would be proven to give that to the public so that they may offer their input.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. Madam Chair and Mr. Nelson, thank you very much for pointing that out. So for the public, that email address is board, B-O-A-R-D, at OSBE, which stands for Office of the State Board of Education, dot Idaho, dot gov. Again, board, at OSBE, dot Idaho, dot gov. And so yes, I would encourage members of the public to reach out to the board. And we'll learn more about what their proposed definitions are this afternoon. And we'll learn more about the importance of that. And at the very least, for the citizens to send a message of concern to the State Board of Education, for them to acknowledge and recognize the importance of this issue. This is a big, important issue to a lot of people in Idaho. And the people of Idaho deserve for their voice to be heard on this issue. So I would encourage committee members, and perhaps that could be something that we could submit. And, and to the members of the public, also encourage you to submit testimony to our State Board of Education for them to recognize the importance of this issue in our state.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. Okay, committee, we are right on time. We are now going to take a 15-minute break.
Hey, Pam Hippey, I'll get back to you the next video. God bless you and God bless America. God bless our Capitol in Boise, Idaho, and all those that work hard to keep our freedoms.